In the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivi- individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Amy, would you please take roll call?
Commissioner Valenzuela?
Present.
Commissioner Padilla?
Here.
Commissioner Muciel?
Present.
Vice Chair Woods?
Here.
Chair Muse?
Present.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. At this time, I will open public communication for anyone wishing to speak on any item not listed on the agenda. If you're wishing to speak, please step forward. You have three minutes to speak. Seeing no interest, I now close public communication. Okay. At this moment, I will go to the first agenda item, which is the consent of the calendar for the minutes of February 25th. Are there any questions or concerns in regards to the minutes from the last meeting? Seeing none, I will accept a motion to accept the minutes.
A motion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any objections? Seeing none, motion passes five to zero. Okay, Amy, you're up.
I have this question. Honorable Chair Commissioners, members- ... ...in conjunction with an example of dairy which currently has the onsite or the offsite sale of wine. I has been current operating as a drive-through dairy with the offsite sale of- Now the business owner is proposing to change type of alcoholic beverages sold by adding distilled spirits. And that not only requires a change of code, he needs- But it also changes the type of ABC alcoholic beverage control license that's from the state of California. Location on remote or the site is on remote. Avenue on- Up, so- Up here, um, this is part over here, this is the drive-through dairy. And as you can see here, how I am around one out. Um, the dairy is approximately, as you can see, uh, it has about 12 hundred square. That includes merchandise areas, cooler, porch areas, also restroom and office areas. Um- Those, the- Over here, which is the- So, um, as with all every conditional use permit we have for any type of alcoholic beverage sale, um, according to the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, one other offsite license- Act, and that's El Superior Grocery Store, which is located across the street- Shopping Center. Um, unfortunately, ABC- Are phone calls and are emails asking about over concentration. So, knowing and given the experience that I have with census tracts and over concentration, knowing that there are only two active offsite licenses with the- Act, it's staff's best decision. And the census tract is not over concentrated with the two licenses, and therefore does not find a public, a finding of public convenience necessity. But this time, staff is recommending the plan- Following the public hearing, adopt resolution- Fix resolution of the- Park approving- Offsite sale of distilled spirits, a type ABC license- Drive-through dairy. One five three point one two- Zero point eight two in the city's- Location is one four zero- Applicant is- Assistant's operating the case-
Thank you, Amy. At this point, um, do any of the commissioners have any questions of Amy?
Yeah, I have a question. I was under the impression that, um, liquor licenses were at a maximum and that the applicant would have to find someone else's liquor license in order to, to have a liquor license at this location. Is that true?
That is if it is a new license. If he did not currently have an existing license at the- He would, yes. However, this is an upgrade. There's already an existing license at that location. What you're thinking of is alcohol policy number twenty-eight, which applies to brand-new, never been licensed.
I got a question. You said, uh, he's been licensed before, sell distilled spirits?
No.
No?
No. He currently has a type twenty license from the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, which allows him to have the offsite sale of beer and wine only. Wants to add to that to be able to sell alcohol, gin, whiskey.
Thank you.
Any other concerns or questions to staff?
I, I got one more question, question. In a drive-through situation like a dairy where person just drives up, and they hand him the liquor, or does he have to get off the vehicle?
It is state law that they are required, whoever the purchaser is, is to get out of the vehicle and purchase it at a cash register. That's state Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control law, um, that is a law that he has to follow.
Also, I know that, that dairy's at, and I see a lot of people walking in. Is that a safe, uh, as far as the area walkways to walk in?
We have not, um, we did check with the city department, and they have no activity in the street versus vehicle otherwise directly associated with this business. So, based on that, as far as we can tell, it's operating just fine. And it has been operating in that manner for over thirty-
Thank you.
Amy, so, um, basically, you have indicated that the ABC have not responded to your requests to provide, um, more information on the other locations of the, um, onsite, distilled, um, offsite. Okay. Um, so again, the only ones that you are aware of are?
The only other active license- Grocery store, which is across the street. I A, which used to be across the street and is no longer there. They, they did have a license, however, they've surrendered it back to ABC. Or active within-
And that CVS or, maybe CVS or Walmart?
Those are, uh, the- Yes, the, um, the Viartas, um, El Superior, which is across the- All in different census tracts.
So the concern that I have is that, um, the city can be pretty much saturated depending on the census tract.
That could be the case. Um, the one thing to keep- Our city is approximately seventy-five percent residential. Our commercial areas are in small concentrate areas, which where most of the times where you find alcoholic beverage sales, both as a restaurant or onsite, but also as offsite too. Unfortunately, ABC calculates everything by census tract, so, and you're right, there could be one right across the street, but it-
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, uh, for staff by any commissioners?
All right, Amy, thank you very much. At this point, I will now open public communication on this issue. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please step forward. Please state your name. Is, are you the applicant?
Name is Dick Abbott. I'm the applicant's agent. I'd be- See paperwork. Uh, I've been doing this for- Again, hey, how nice and how cooperative you're- Probably one of the- Here, that's me. Applicant's-
Thank you very much. Hmm, no, not at this point. Any questions from the commissioners on this, again? Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no further interest, I now close public communication. And again, prior to making a vote on this, or again, are there any concerns or questions in regards to this issue? Again, noting that, um, this location has already, or currently has a type twenty license, which allows them to sell beer and wine, and, um, they're looking to upgrade to a twenty-one, which is allowing them to sell, um, distilled alcohol. So, any other concerns?
Well, I can tell you as a father and a grandfather, I don't want to see any more liquor sold in my city. Period.
Thank you, sir. At this point-
I have one more question.
All right.
Uh, I noticed that other, there's a little hangout right outside, there's a car lot, there's a tire shop, and there's usually baskets there where people, homeless or- Whatever the problem is, but they're hanging around there. Uh, is, is there, is there gonna be this miniature little bottle sold? That people pick up for a dollar, two dollars, then two, three, and throw them away? Is that the type of business, uh, those bottles that we're selling? Little samples?
This is for-
Mr. Abbott?
The applicant, would you please step forward?
Can you answer that question?
This is the law required by this state to post no lording. There's a state law requiring that no lording be allowed, uh, and it's up to, to the applicant to ensure that this does not happen. Uh, they're not allowed that. That's just part of the state law. That's part of the ABC requirements. No lording be allowed at all. And they have to post a sign, no drinking on the applicant's property, and no, uh, lording allowed. That is part of the state law.
What my concern was not lording in the property. I'm saying there's a tire shop next door. There's a car lot, and there's like an empty, some trees at Shorebury there, where there's baskets under there where like, for people, homeless, hang around. And I've noticed a few of the people are very well intoxicated. Where I see, when I went to the tire shop one time, there was a couple of guys very, very intoxicated, and they're, they're getting the liquor, right? They're going in and out of a liquor store. They, they just buy beer, of course, you know, but if it leads to, uh, whiskey and little tiny bottles. That's what I'm concerned about. Are those tiny bottles gonna be sold like a little samplers in that liquor store?
This could happen, but the applicant is very aware of the possibilities, so he keeps control, he will keep control like he does now with the beer and wine. The police department have had no complaints or, uh, requirements for the last two years, according to the report. So, he does a very good business now maintaining and keeping his place clean and neat. If the other people, uh, move to different locations, I, I don't know how he can control that.
Understandable.
Mr. President, uh, the commissioner is asking you, sir, if they will be selling the little sample bottles?
You gonna be selling the little small, one-shot glass?
Single serving, right.
I'm sorry?
The little, um, the single bottles that you normally get on airplanes?
Yes.
Does he sell those?
He can if you, if you allow it. You. Because there is no restriction for the size, quantity at the present time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, I will accept a motion. Whether to accept or deny this applicant's request?
I just wanted to add one thing to the record, um, in what Mr. Padilla was saying, that there is a, a big mass of, um, uh, people that hang out, out in the front, closer, more closer to McDonald's, if I'm not mistaken. And you see that they're highly intoxicated, which brings a concern to me. Being so close to McDonald's. It being accessible this easily for them to walk in, uh, it's another concern to mine. Where I think it should be strictly for people that actually drive through, and that's it. Not people to walk up. That's all.
Okay.
Can I add something? Now that Mr. Padilla brought up the little single servings, um, is there a possibility where we can possibly approve their license but make sure that they don't sell the single servings because, for those purposes?
Yes, you can add that as a condition.
Okay.
Uh, Amy, similar conditions have, have been added to that effect, haven't, haven't they, in the?
It's been a while. Um, however, we have imposed similar types of conditions, not specifically to single servings of distilled spirits. However, on prior CUPs in years past, we have, um, put conditions that prohibit the sales of forties, if y'all know what those are?
Yeah, yeah, and also single cans sometimes.
Mm-hmm, yes, and single cans as well.
Yeah.
Of beer.
So, yes, that would be an appropriate condition.
Okay, thank you.
Kind of piggybacking on Mr. Woods, uh, in regards to, um, businesses selling alcohol. Um, I understand, sir, that you currently have one, and you've been doing it for a number of years. And, um, based on the police reports, uh, we have not had, um, any issues in regards to your selling of alcohol at that location. The concerns that were brought up by a couple of the commissioners, um, primarily deal with some of the homeless uh, that, um, kind of camp out near that area. And I know the issue of homeless individuals are, you know, that's something for, to balance with it for the city. But, um, being so close to your business and the intoxication of those individuals, uh, and that tend to go over to the McDonald's area. Like, like the couple of commissioners indicated, and I also agree with, is, is a concern. Okay, but, um, the fact that this is not a new application, but a request for an upgrade. So, some of the concerns that, um, are being, um, brought up already exist because you currently have your license. So, um, again, I put it to the, uh, to the commissioners. Um, I will, at this point, uh-
Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Um, in listening to your comments and everything, and this could possibly be an additional condition at the commission's discretion. Um, as you know, we have alcoholic beverage policy number twenty-eight, which I mentioned a little bit in my presentation. Um, because obviously I'm hearing there is a concern with alcoholic beverage sales citywide, um, City Attorney Olivas, can we add a condition that prohibits the applicant from selling his current type twenty license to another location within the city of Baldwin Park?
What would be the, the purpose of prohibiting the transfer of an existing?
I can, I can clear this up if you'll let me speak. We are canceling the twenty upon issue the twenty-one. It will not be effective. It goes back to ABC. So, there'll be no new license coming out, just the twenty-one. Twenty will be canceled. That's in the ABC, uh, application package. And they should not have to worry about that being sold to somebody else. Thank you.
Yeah.
And if you, and if you'd like to, you know, further that, just to be sure, you can add that as a condition.
Yes. That would be appropriate.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, there were a couple of conditions that, uh, were asked to be added too, and one was the selling of the, uh, individual or single-
Single serving.
Single serving, uh, bottles of distilled, uh, beverages. And also the request to add, um, in regards to the selling of the license, the ABC license, which is already, uh, a state law. Um, but we would like to add that to the, as a, as a condition.
Before we go any further, also, about the issue about the, uh, uh, people that are intoxicated in the area. It's not necessarily the homeless, it's the local people, uh, individuals that are, you know, unfortunate, are alcoholics, and they tend to just walk over, cross over, grab one or two beers and go back and sit in the corner drinking, go back and forth. This is what they do. I'm sure that this has been done every day where they sell individual beers. If we could, and I'm not sure, we can limit the, uh, single cans, containers to, and like the walk-ups, not some of the drive-through, the people that just walk up, get one beer, put in the package, and you walk away. Can we limit that, or will that be, uh- Legal?
Yes, you, you can put the single, uh, uh, can limitation if you wish. And the applicant, of course, would have to decide. If they wish to get the type twenty-one, will they accept that condition? And I guess we can ask the applicant spokesperson that, um-
The single sale, uh, other way, when you talk about, uh, people buying who are alcohol, uh, are already drunk, uh, there's a state law saying to the applicant that he cannot sell to people who are intoxicated. That is, again, also ABC law. And as far as the single cans, that's a very, very hard situation. If you sell a single can of beer and somebody wants to drink it somewhere on the street, that's fine. But if, the fact is that if you have to sell a six-pack, he's gonna have six cans to drink rather than the one. So, that really doesn't make a whole lot of sense to sell just one, one individual can. Uh, eliminating that. And as far as people walk up, there's a lot of neighbors who live in the area. They walk over to the store to pick up their beer and then wa- walk back home. They don't want to drive a half a block just to get a, a six-pack of beer or something of that nature. So, make that consideration too. And applicant would not like the fact that he cannot sell singles that he already does. He's all allowed to do that. That would defeat anything we're trying to do here. Thank you.
Okay, it'll still be-
The reason for buying single beers is not, or buying a six-pack, a twelve, eighteen-pack, and usually people that are drinkers, beer drinkers, like cold beer. You buy an eighteen-pack, it'll be hot before you, you know, you're not gonna use them all. You want one at a time. That's what I'm concerned about. Only concerned about the people in the area that are, that's all they do. This is an everyday thing. I see them every day. Go in and out, in and out, buying single cans. And they're usually by that, by two or three hours, they're drunk and they're passed out under the bush or somewhere. And, uh, I've seen them. I see them every day. It's not, it's not why, uh, nobody has reported, and why Baldwin Park Police Department hasn't checked into it. But, uh, those are not homeless people. Those are people that live in the area, and I know some of the individuals that do it. Thank you.
Chairman Muse, members of the commission, in my opinion, since they are applying for a CUP that would in effect, um, cover both licenses, right? One collapses into the other. Then you could put a condition requiring the banning of single-can beers. So, if you wish to put that condition in, I believe it is legally permissible. Whether the applicant will appeal to city council, that would be up to them.
Okay. So, Mr. Padilla, are you asking to be, for this to be added into the, as a requirement, as a condition?
Yes, that's what I'm asking, the conditions that be put into it, and move to the city council.
Well, at this point, it'll be here, and it won't be to the city council. It'll be up to the applicant if they choose to-
To live with it, or take the chance that the city council may just say no to the whole thing.
Right. So, at this point, it's still here in the, uh, planning commissioners' authority to, um, accept the, the use of the permit with the conditions that are being requested here at the, with the commissioners. So, again, um, again, correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, based on the information that I'm hearing, two conditions, uh, have been requested to be added, and both of them in regards, requests are, one for the, uh, limited to not allow the sale of single canned and of the single bottle, small bottle, uh, distilled, um-
And collapsing the, uh, type twenty-one and, type twenty into the twenty-one.
Correct. At this point, do I have a motion on this item?
Got a motion to move.
Got a motion to accept it?
Accept it.
With the conditions-
With the conditions.
Being listed? I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second. Any objections?
Yes, I object.
Okay, Amy, can I please have a roll call?
Commissioner Padilla?
Yes.
Commissioner Valenzuela?
Yes.
Commissioner Muciel? Vice Chair Woods?
No.
Chair Muse?
Yes. Motion passes four to one.
And can we get the applicant up to? You, you understand the conditions that we have added?
Yeah, I can understand, but, uh, twenty-five ounce can is single can. Uh, we are, everybody sells single can, you know, twenty-five ounce. Well, nowadays is coming to, in twenty-five ounce can, so, how can I just, uh, cancel the single can? Because the twenty-five ounce is the only single can. They don't have the six-pack or nothing.
Okay, are we talking about the selling of the sixteen-ounce? Or because the forty-five ounces are, like he indicates, it's almost like a forty-five ounce beer, right? Those are big ones. There's any, to be clarification, or are we still with the condition of not selling of the single?
Okay, single cans. We're talking about single cans. We're talking about one can, single cans at a time, not the three-pack. We're not talking about the three-pack that they sell, uh, the tall ones, three-pack?
Yeah, twelve and sixteen ounce, it's okay.
The three-packs?
Uh, only, I, twelve, sixteen ounce, I, I, it's okay. I, I, I won't sell single. But twenty-five ounces are coming only in single can. only in single can.
Right. I apologize. Okay, so the stipulation is of the 12, and what was the other?
16-ounce.
12 and 16-ounce, no selling of the individual of the 12 and 16-ounce.
Yeah, that, that's okay. I don't sell the 12 and 16.
Okay.
Is that acceptable to the board?
Is that acceptable?
Opposed, voted yes.
Mr. Padilla?
Fine.
Okay.
Okay.
So the condition is not to sell the individual cans of the 12 and 16-ounce?
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
All right. You agree to those conditions?
Yeah, I read all the conditions, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay. Next agenda item, please.
This one I can do from over here, because I don't, because I don't have a presentation. So, Honorable Chair, Commissioners, members of the audience, this item before you is a request to amend the city's municipal code, adding language relating to cottage food operations in accordance with, in 2012, the California Legislature, the Governor signed assembly bill, 16, that all local governments, both cities and counties, have regulations and development standards relating to cottage food. This bill became a, January 1st, all local governments are now required to amend their municipal code, having this new state law. Cottage food operations are generally described as small food businesses that produce potentially non-hazardous foods, such as baked goods, candies, jellies, fried pasta, dried fruit, and baking mixes, that all in one bar. This would operate out of a private home with limited, provided a certain criteria, and that reasonable, only on the following factors, space, traffic control, parking, and noise control. The proposed amendment includes definitions of, in cottage food operation, operator, cottage food products, directed and direct sales, and then, it amends our current definition of home occupation. The home occupation section of the code, sections 153.120 and 250, 70, are proposed to be displaced with, ice to, home occupations, office, but also, home occupations are also classified as cottage food operations. The county of Los Angeles admits all their regulations relating to health and safety, food. So, at this time, in order for us to be, it was state law, staff is recommending the Planning Commission, public hearing, following the public, up to resolution 15-05, title the resolution of the Planning Commission of Baldwin Park, recommending the city, factors, 13.120, of the city's, cottage food operations. All residential zones, applicant is the city of Baldwin Park, in case, on 70, presentation.
Thank you, Amy. Again, at this point, do any of the Commissioners have any questions to staff?
Does the, does the state, then, or the state or the county, then, are they required to do any inspections in any of these concerns?
If I recall correctly, the Health Department, they do have to get a Health Department permit. So that would be the County Health Department.
Do you happen to know exactly how many locations we have within the city that fall under this category?
Seventy-five percent of the city of Baldwin Park is zoned residential.
Okay.
How about actual, actual, small businesses?
Cottage food operations? We shouldn't have any in the city.
Oh.
Yet. That doesn't mean...
Better tell my neighbors.
That doesn't mean they're not out there, but I, as far as we're aware, if someone was conducting a cottage food operation, it would not be approved by the city because we do not have a current code mechanism to approve that. This code amendment would allow that.
Okay, so I see, so homes that are currently... Strike that. Okay.
We are being audiotaped.
That's why I stopped. Okay. At this point, I will now open this item to public hearing, public communication. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please step forward. If you do, you have three minutes to speak, and please state your name and your address. Seeing no interest, I now close public communication.
President, I mean, Chairman Muse, just as a background, this was prompted by someone who did request a license for cottage food. And we discovered we didn't have an ordinance to cover it, so there are people out there who are trying to follow the law.
Understood. And this ordinance will allow us to at least oversee or have some input in regards to people putting in a request for those permits. Okay.
And a question, would that, then, we would just be aligning ourselves with other cities that are doing the same thing?
Okay, thank you. At this point, I motion that we accept, let's see, this amendment, this motion?
It's resolution PC 03.
Yes, and all that comes with it. Do I have a second?
Yeah, a second.
Of course, this will go to City Council since it's an ordinance.
Yes. I have a second. Do I have any objections? Seeing none, motion passes five to zero. Amy?
Last Thursday, the county held another, within, of the, Vineland Residential, there was a, in ongoing, by those present, is a, the, the, the applicant, uh...
Just a quick question. The current buildings that are located on the property, it's up to the owner of the property to have them inspected and determine whether or not they're capable of housing individuals that are said on their applica, on their application?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item. Did we have any input on that halt?
I understand, we have not filed, Washington's, or anything, um...
Okay, thank you. Next item.
And the city of Baldwin, unfortunately, uh, DTA are at the, um, so I don't have anything...
All right, thank you, Amy. Is that the final item? Okay. Well, first of all, thank you, Amy, for, first of all, the words from the applicant as far as how good you are in dealing with them. It's a sentiment that I think, so far, all of the people who have dealt with Baldwin Park and their Planning Department echoes, and first of all, thank you for that. Well, welcome, welcome aboard. Any comments from any Commissioners?
I have just a little anecdote about the Murph. I noticed that when Irwindale wasn't able to get rid of Haifong Foods, that then the attitude changed. I think they were planning on kicking those guys out and putting that Murph in that large building. That's what rumor has it. And now, now that that hasn't happened, there, everything is very quiet.
Interesting.
I had a question in regards to the Murph. Is that the same thing that they're talking about, that it's the chemical waste plant that they're trying to put right next to the Santa Fe Dam, or are we talking about...
That's the same.
Totally different? Because we went to a meeting on Wednesday of last week, and they said the applicant was Clean Tech Environmental, and I see over here Athens.
It's probably two different names.
Okay.
Sounds like it. Um, materiality, it's trash sorting, for example. They sort your garbage from, that's what it is.
The plan he's actually talking about, that I've read, I've read articles about it, it's actually a chemical waste plant, and that's being placed more towards the back side of Santa Fe Dam. Like I know, when you drive up that little hill and you go to the back, there's another road that goes this way, it's going to be behind that, and that's what they're fighting, cities there and neighboring cities, because it's going to endanger the wildlife that's in there, and the natural resources that we have that come from that park. That's what I'm thinking.
Okay. At this point, since there's no more items on the agenda, I will now take a motion for German.
A motion to German.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I know there's no objections. Motion passes. Five to zero.
Amy, put your, your applications on your...